On the March 23 meeting of the county township council to order, we'll call Mr. Lauer.
Mr. Tigris, Mr. Curry here.
Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Burquid.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Here.
Praise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, approval of the minutes from the March 9 meeting.
I'll move second.
Any discussion in favor?
Just one clarification, Mr. Chairman, the Peters, under miscellaneous, I see Peters concept entry, they were looking for two volunteers to share the responsibility to organize that. That wasn't really clarified in the minutes, and I would just say that needs still business. So if you could just...
Okay. Alrighty, any other discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seven, nothing. Special reports, there are none. Audience comments on non-agenda...
Before you go on, actually, we were gonna have Chief McLaughlin give us a special report regarding...
Oh, okay. Well, in fact, we do have a special report.
It says none.
And we have to follow the agenda. All right, Chief McLaughlin.
So it's been a week since we've last seen each other. In that week, we have grown exponentially in the county, in the region, and in the state as far as coronavirus cases are concerned. Our mission remains very, very simple. It's the health and safety of all of our township residents from the fire department, from emergency management. We've been constantly working with the police department, with EMS, with township administration, and yourselves. Things that we have been doing and working on, we're still trying to be an outlet for some of the residents that seek assistance as far as help with clarification on what the governors always have been. To that end, we've simply just guided them to the state's website, sent them safe documents to let them know, this is what we're dealing with, this is the guidance that we've been given, we're just simply passing along to you. We have compiled a list to the restaurants that are in town to help our residents and our business owners kind of remain in clothe at this point in time. That's been very helpful to us, a bunch of feedback, I think, from a lot of residents, really appreciating that. If there's anything that you think we need to be doing that we're not, please, this is not a time for criticism or anything, this is more of a time for learning. Did you pass that out?
Mm-hmm.
So, Mr. Lauer has shared with everybody here what I get from Allegheny County Department of Emergency Services, and that's a daily situation report. They are operating 12 hours time frame from 8:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. tonight, when their DOC is open daily for those hours. During that time, we'll send out a situation report, which you'll see here, that details everybody that's on duty, staff positions that they're staffing, and the current situation as far as the United States, Pennsylvania, and Allegheny County specifically. A little bit of that trickles over in Allegheny, can only support Metro to that area, so you'll see our numbers scattered in there about. And realistically, what you're seeing here as well, one of the things that I wanted to point out are the municipal declarations for disaster in Allegheny County. Currently, there are 40 of them. At any point in time, if our resources start to exceed what we, or our needs start to exceed our resources, we will declare that emergency or disaster. What we have to do to do that is get the signature from all seven council members and the signature from Mr. Lauer and myself. If it gets bad enough, I'm sure we can do that digitally. Other than that, does anybody have any questions?
The thing I will point out is that I think some of the best and clearest information with regard to the situation locally is coming out of Allegheny County. And one of the links that's on our website is the Allegheny County Health Department, and I think they have done an excellent job of being able to provide information that people can actually use in a way that people can understand it. And the message seems to be consistent that comes out of that department. So I think there's to be commended, this information that is now coming out of the Allegheny County Emergency Services is also information that we have... They're all part of a region, and that region is anchored by Allegheny County, so...
I do have a question, Chief Mike. Could you talk a little bit about what inappropriate issues would be if you wanted to call 911? Had an issue with some, something that wasn't an emergency, and asked the chief, Chief Brians, about it, and he said, "Don't have them call 911, a police patrol will show up." Well, this evening on the Channel 4 news, Washington County dispatch said, "Do not call 911 unless it's life threatening." Can you just speak a little bit about which way we're to go, and just so that residents know what to do?
What I will do is forward Washington County's media release that they sent out in relation to that.
Great.
I don't know if it was put into context that it was displayed on the news outlet...
Oh, okay.
Because further down, it explains when to call 911 for coronavirus emergencies, when you have that severe shortage of breath.
Right.
You know, not just, "I've got a runny nose, and I think I've got coronavirus." That's not to call the dirt wanting to handle. So just from Mr. Gates, probably about a half an hour ago, I got an email from him with his media release to all the media outlets detailing that.
But the answer directly to your question, and Chief Brians has also talked to County 911, nothing has changed with regard to how our police are dispatched. So if someone is in need of police, fire, or EMS, those calls are all dispatched on the 911, and people should not hesitate to call.
Right, and I think that message kind of got construed a little bit, but when there's an emergency, when you're in need of a police, fire, or EMS personnel, the number to call after hours is always the 911.
And I think people understand that. I think it's about other things that are technically violations, or people not acting like they should, or whatever it is, that's not really life threatening. And they don't, I think people are sensitive to the idea that you, that first responders have things they have to do, and are trying to not call if it's not necessary. But the question is how you report something if you don't call 911.
And the answer is, you dial 911, and it does not have to be life threatening. If there's a need for police services, the only way they can be dispatched is out of the dispatch center, so...
Well, that clarify something, because it was, the TV story really didn't come across that way.
And the way that you read this release, it'll come across that way also, and then you scroll to the second page where it says defining COVID-19 emergencies, so on and so forth.
Okay, and that would be a good thing to post also on the website. And just to say, you guys have done really a good job of keeping a lot of good information up there for people. I think that's a great resource.
There's a fine line between too much, because people tend not to listen, and not enough where people are constantly asking questions. Trying to find that happy medium is something that if you ask 10 people, you'll get 10 different answers. So we try to just act as the way that we would want it done, and present it that way.
I think you can be a trusted resource. That's the other problem, that sometimes people get information from other people walking around, getting it from, after the sources. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
There is one thing that I think the community could do. We are faced with a shortage of N95 masks, and I truly believe either through, people have these for construction purposes, because it's the same mask that somebody doing private would use, or they have a store of these in their house for other purposes. It would be good if people could share with us those masks. And I think the way to do that is to simply drop them off at this building. We have a place that accepts documents downstairs, and the door's open, so it's one of the things I'm gonna try to reach out through the papers and that, and try to encourage people if they can help. Because we should really have them in the hands of people who need them to be able to help the community, so...
I would also like to thank both Mr. Lauer and Chief McLaughlin, and all of our emergency people. I know that the people in the township don't see all of the work that's gone into, first of all, preparing the plans for what's happening, and then the amount of work that's gone into the execution. It's immense. And they don't really see the fact that these people are frequently, you know, putting themselves in a potential harm's way, and they're really to be commended, and it really exemplifies the level to which our, you know, emergency services and township personnel are serving the community. So thank you on behalf of the community.
Could we talk about one other thing? Allegheny County is going into a shutdown, and we haven't, Washington hasn't done that. Personally, I think people need to be taking the whole social distancing, physical distancing more seriously. There are a lot of people who are letting their kids visit friends, and there are a lot of people who are still walking around. And I don't know, Chief Mike, if you think that's something we need to try to emphasize more to people. I just, I think people are being a little cavalier about that.
I think it's something that as a community, we set an example from the top, and when we do something like this, and everybody sees on camera that we're doing what we're supposed to do, and we emphasize that message from emergency management, from the township, I think that starts to go a long way. It didn't get real per se until Westport hasn't made it out its first case, and now there's almost 100. So just in a week's time, it's gotten pretty real. I think it's got the attention of people, but at the same time, when the tanning salon was open last week, I sit there and I say, "Why?" So...
Okay, thank you. Maybe President Trump was in town. All right. I would just note that the item on audience comments, for those that are watching, that audience comments on non-agenda items are suspended for the duration of the coronavirus emergency, not because we don't want to hear from people, we do value the comments, but we're trying to limit the exposure of people, both for us and for them. If you have an item that you believe should be brought to the attention of council, please email it to Mr. Lauer, or Mr. Jerosky. We will certainly consider it, consider the input, but having a lot of people here is something we're, as we just got through discussing, you know, we're trying to avoid. So thank you very much for your cooperation in that. Unfinished business, there is none. New business, first item's resolution authorizing the township manager to submit to PennDOT, an application for a traffic signal approval for East McMurray Road, Rolling Hills Drive intersection.
Ironically, the fact that the state offices are closed, I think our permits may actually be processed quicker. To DEP's credit, they are working from home. The first day they were closed, they immediately asked for information concerning our responses to their review. The same is true of the Washington County Conservation District, as well as PennDOT. One of the things that PennDOT requires for the highway occupancy permit is an application for a traffic signal approval, and what this does is authorize the township manager to sign the traffic signal improvement application.
Second. Other discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seven, nothing. Next item is approval of a contract with GeoMechanics for the purpose of providing geotechnical engineering service related to the construction of Rolling Hills Drive.
GeoMechanics is a geotechnical engineer record for the design of Rolling Hills Drive project. They were also the engineer record for Phase 1 of this project. We need a geotechnical engineer on site to be able to inspect and correct them as it goes on. It only seems natural that who we would choose is the firm that has actually created the design standards. They worked well with us on the first phase of the project. It's gonna be my recommendation that council award a contract to GeoMechanics based upon the proposal they submitted on March 5, 2020.
Move we award a contract to GeoMechanics for earthwork inspection, field engineering for the construction of Rolling Hills Transportation Improvement Phase 2 in accordance with the proposal dated March 5, 2020, contingent on solicitors' review of contract language.
Second. Any discussion?
I do have a clarifying question. The not to exceed number says $35,000 or $40,000. Did we decide which it will be?
It will be the $40,000 dollar number.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Okay, approval of a contract with HRG for the purpose of providing contract administration and inspection services related to the construction of Rolling Hills Drive.
So, at their request of the township, HRG has provided a proposal to construction, administration, inspection services for the Rolling Hills Drive project. HRG is the firm that has done the design for this project. On the first phase of this, we actually did the contract administration and inspection services in-house. Mr. Zomitis and I are both of the opinion, given the work volume that's been assigned to the engineering department, that that's not going to be possible for this phase. And so therefore, what we'd like to do is employ the services of HRG to do this. The one thing about it that I would tell you is that by doing this, the cost of these services will be split with the school district. So the contract we're looking at, I believe the dollar amount is $99,100. So we would assume half of that cost.
The school district assuming the one we just approved, half of that as well?
Yes. And that's what we paid the last time around.
I'll make a motion that we award a contract to HRG for construction phase services for the Rolling Hills Transportation Improvements Phase 2 in accordance with their proposal dated, oh, I don't know what date it was, because it doesn't say here. Contingent upon the solicitor's review of the general contract provisions, was this a not to exceed 99.1, correct?
It's not to exceed, if it goes over that, they have to come back to the township, so...
Good. Discussion in favor?
Second.
Is there any other discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Award of a contract for custodial services.
The township had previously solicited custodial services for maintaining various buildings that the township owns. These bids, the original bids that we received were rejected in part for two reasons. One, we only received one bid, and secondly, the, it resulted in a substantial increase over what we're currently paying. We sent this back out for bids. There were four firms that acquired bid documents and toured the facilities, but only one of the contractors, our current contractor, decided to submit a bid. The amounts they submitted are what in fact they had submitted previously. It's gonna be my recommendation that the township award a three-year contract to Service Master, subject to annual redoals, so that we can determine whether or not there's an alternative to this contract.
So, your second. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Very second.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes, I did have a couple of questions. I don't want to prolong this, but I did want to clarify a couple of things. I'd like to first know from Mr. Jerosky if he knows why the other companies are not responding. Is it because of the bid bond that we require? What do you think this is?
Well, several firms did previously, the first round, say they would not submit a bid because they didn't want to have to submit a bid bond, which at that point, we don't have the bidding anyway. The, of the three firms, the three other firms we had this second time around, one firm did submit a bid, but it came in late and without a bid bond. It was $300 higher over the three-year contract that the Service Master submitted. And another firm had told me they just didn't have the people, they thought they might have the resources, they did not. And the third firm, which I did think would submit a bid, and has in the past to the township, just never got back to me, never submitted a bid, so...
Okay. The owner of the company submitted a very nice documented list of justifying why her rate increase occurred, but that brings me to the question. She pointed out some issues at the rec center and the library, that, you know, we just identified fee rates for the rec center. In fact, it's costing us more to clean because of programming. You know, maybe we need to look at passing some of that through. Are you going to recommend that Park and Rec Board look at those again?
We can certainly take a look at it.
You have to.
Yeah.
And I think there's things we can do here, I mean, why are you allowed to eat and drink throughout the entire library?
Right.
Why do we have that as a policy?
They have to have they leave, which makes sense, but I agree with you, I didn't think they were allowed to have food all through the place.
Once we get back to running in normal order, let me have...
No, I'm just saying, I just don't think that's right. And some of these other things, like, you know, there's birthday parties, like the rec center, there's birthday parties, there's meetings, there's tournaments, there's all this stuff, you know, that should be their responsibility. They should pay for that.
And I don't disagree with you.
Because he's putting in there, assuming that, he might be assuming there's 200 of these a year. I mean, I don't know how many there actually are, but they should pay.
But I can tell you, the Service Master... Service Master knows exactly what they're bidding. They've been the, for a long time, so... But you know what, I will follow up with that. I will follow with that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Another discussion? Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seven, nothing. All right. Because we really don't know how long our modified work schedules that we voted on the last time may run, they may go past the two weeks that we talked about, we're asking for authorization of the chairman of council and the township manager to decide whether or not to continue this modified work schedule that's in place for up to an additional two weeks, should that become necessary.
So, one of the things that I've provided you tonight is a survey that the township has undertaken, and we're doing this as a service to a number of municipalities, to look at how they are handling this in terms of their workforce. And what you see when you look at that is that, for the most part, municipalities are emulating or come to the same conclusion with regard to their workforce and how they're being treated. To the extent that we can, we have people working from home, we have people on modified work schedules, and it really varies from department to department. You know, in terms of the police department, of course, they are fully working, with the exception that we have one of the members of the command staff home to deal with childcare issues, but also to make sure that we have someone that's available in case they're needed. In terms of the fire department, they are working as normal. The chief and the deputy chief are attempting to schedule themselves at different hours so that in fact they're not in contact with each other. The public works department, up till last week, was working a modified schedule, but with the governor's order, the kind of work they normally do cannot be done, so they are on standby at home. We need them to be available in case there is an emergency, like a weather condition kind of thing. One of the things that's gonna change about this is very shortly, the grass is gonna start to grow, and one of the things we are permitted to do is maintain the turf, and so we're gonna be doing that. The planning staff, up till the governor's order, we were rotating building inspectors, the building inspectors were not at home, and as well as the code enforcement officer and the assistant planning director, but I think they're an example of what it is, and I give our workforce a lot of credit. They've become fairly creative about being able to work from home. AEC, who maintains our network system, has provided anyone who has requested access to our computer network, and they're using that from home. So for instance, in the planning department, right now, there's a plan review of home goods is underway to move into the, next to Aldi's. Building inspectors are continuing plan reviews. When the building inspector left, he took all of the permits that are under, that have been requested for review, home within, those permits are all being processed so that in fact, when the building opens back up again, they can all be issued at the same time. We are inundated with lien letters because of interest rates and home sales. We have developed a process that allows us to continue to issue lien letters, although I don't know what people are gonna do when they close, because they're not gonna be able to report the deeds.
Well, I got an email today from a quarter deeds office, and you can, according to the email, I don't know if it came from them, but it came from somebody, one of the title searchers. They told me that you can mail the deed in, or do it electronically, I guess, as long as you have the money, and they're gonna record them, but I don't know, I don't know how tabranious that's gonna be. The impression was that it was going to be, maybe they're gonna come in once a week or something to do that, so...
Seth Koots has been working with Ed from home, and John Smith, they have drafted a new sign ordinance. Kristin, who's the, takes care of property maintenance, is actually drafting all the letters to follow up on outstanding issues, so that when she comes back to work, we can issue those. I really don't want to be sending out property maintenance things in the light of the emergency. And then Ed's in the office, and Ed's handling all the calls in the department. So those kind of things keep happening. It is not work as normal, but it's work that's valuable. The same is true inside of the engineering department. Mr. Zomitis is here, the two other people in the engineering department are working from home. I know Jason has been drafting the bid documents needed for the storm sewer projects that are coming up later in the year, as well as the rejuvenator. The library and the park and rec departments are continuing to work from home, and if there's a good, a feel-good story that comes out of this whole thing. Sidney Pravitz, who's a part-time employee at the library, one of the things that's a really popular program they have is this escape room that they have for kids that is themed around Harry Potter, and when they couldn't have that event, they made a digital version of this. That has now been accessed by 68,000 people, and it has been viewed in 17 countries. And Sidney actually got a call from a game developer in Australia, asking whether or not she would like a job. So, these kinds of creative kind of things are coming out of the library and the park and rec department. In terms of administrative employees, we have people coming in to be able to continue to process things. So Mrs. Climon was in today, be able to process payroll. Tomorrow, Mrs. Coyle will be in to be able to process the bills. Brian's been working from home, and you're going to see by the time this is all done, reviews of various policies that we have intended to do this year anyhow. So I think we're, the community is being served as well as it can be, given the circumstances. One of the things that I do want to point out to you, and we're gonna work towards having a better understanding of this, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act creates responsibilities for employers in terms of providing sick leave. And we have people off, and not everyone is in a position that they contribute, and so we have a continuation of pay. And this is particularly true for part-time people. One of the things that we're going to do beginning next week, because we have an obligation under this act to provide two weeks of paid sick time, is that for those people who are in that kind of category, we're gonna classify that continuation of pay as sick leave under the act, so that the township meets its obligation, and that obligation doesn't continue on past that period. So that's one of the things that we'll be doing, but as Mr. Ball had indicated, what I really would like to be able to do is to continue to gather information from other communities, so that we understand how others, municipalities, are dealing with this situation. But if we could have authorization, that we could make a decision at the end of the week, so I could let employees know what their situation is.
Sure.
Sure. Can I ask a clarifying question about this family employee paid leave? When you, how do you interpret up to two, two weeks, up to eighty hours of paid sick time for people who are part-time?
They are entitled to two weeks of what their normal pay would be, exactly what we're doing now. And my only thing is, I want to tell people that they're receiving it under this act, so that two weeks from now, if we decide that they are going to be handled in a different way, we don't have an obligation that continues.
And I'm not disagreeing with that. I wanted to clarify, because what you interpreted is what I'm going to interpret it.
Yes.
And I think what, with everything happening in the city of Pittsburgh, people are struggling to figure out how to do it. And I think that's a legitimate way to apply the law. Thank you for that. So you're asking for a motion that we authorize you and the chairman of council to give him these additional authorities to decide whether or not to continue the modified work schedule currently in place?
Or what that, or what that work, what schedule makes sense going forward. It may be that they're, that, like, for instance, right now, public works employees are on standby. If in fact, if the grass in the park looks like the grass at home, we may be mowing grass next week. That would change that schedule, and what we would do is, would have a modified schedule that would reflect that.
I'll make a motion that we do that.
I'll second. Other discussion? Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I meant that. So will we revisit this at the next meeting or after the two weeks, or how, what's the timeframe?
We're going to go two more weeks, and then if this continues past that, you know, we have three weeks between meetings. I'm going to suggest that we get together on that Monday and decide what it is we want to do.
This is basically a two-week timeframe until we get together at our next meeting, so we don't have to have a telephone conference to talk about stuff.
Right, I'm not challenging you.
No, I understand.
To understand what we're doing and what the timeframe is.
I think if it continues like that, then it should just be what you just proposed now, but week to week. So at some point, you know.
Again, I think.
Instead of giving them two weeks at a clip, it should be a week to week.
Well, actually, it's going to be, it's going to be a week even with this, but we're going to do this for up to two weeks. But what I'm suggesting is, you know, the first two weeks ends this Friday, and then the following two weeks, you know? And at that point, we'll have gone, we'll have gone a month, revisit what it is we're doing at that point.
I think at the end, at the end of a month, which is the termination of this particular authorization, then the situation is going to be entirely different. We're out of.
We're going to have a meeting at that time?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, okay.
So we're going to have a meeting, because there, we're out of, we're out of the immediate, you know, let's, you know, let's do a temporary thing to see what happens. We'll know what's happening at that time. And at that time, we'll be looking at summer schedules. At that time, we'll be, have a better idea what we're doing with lawn mowing and, you know, a lot of other stuff.
Well, to your point, I think that's one of the reasons I was asking, because I think right now, you described a lot of things that people are doing that are work that they wouldn't have been doing if they were here. Those are things that have come into the township and are, they're working on, but with construction stopped and real estate slowed down. You know, the inputs, we react to inputs, and if there are any inputs, we may need to.
Yeah, I think, I think at that time, I mean, I think it's reasonable to assume that we're not going to be able to do what we're doing right now forever. And we're going to have to make some more permanent decisions on it, so.
Thank you for clarifying. So there's a motion.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the payroll and bills. Of note on the accounts payable, we referred to the earlier traffic control equipment approvals. The money's being paid for those two, as well as the twenty-seven thousand dollar payment for a fiber optic repair that we are going to have reimbursed through insurance. I believe that these are appropriate, and I move that we approve and pay them.
Second.
Any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll talk about this next one, Paul.
Yes, I, you know, I don't know what the next three weeks looks like. If there's any chance that council is unable to meet, I would like authorization to pay bills and payrolls upon the review by the vice chairman or a designated councilman, so that in fact, we can stay current on our bills. I would hope in three weeks, we would all be back together.
I would hope so, and these will also be, you know, on the website, under our normal distribution, so everybody will have a chance to see them.
Yeah, so then they will also be placed on the following agenda.
For official confirmation.
Okay, I'll second that, and I would just ask, you know, given that people are not physically here, given that we may not be using supplies, we may not be, you know, I would anticipate that we can look very critically at what we're spending for some of the operations. I mean, there are other departments, obviously, that need their stuff. But given the fact that the buildings are vacant in different areas, we should probably be looking and trying to, not only for this period, but going forward, you know, control our spending. So that would be my only, Katie, off to that. And I would, I'll be happy to review the payroll and bills.
So did somebody make, actually make a motion?
Yeah, I did.
Did, and she seconded it?
Yes, I did.
All right, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Wise decision, I think. Correspondence, Mr. Lauer?
There's a letter that's in the docket from Douglas Kayler. He's the western section chief of dam safety. That letter is significant in that apparently the state has made a determination as to the criteria by which the spillway for the dam needs to be designed to. We have not yet got a clarification of exactly what that standard is, but that will be a significant project that's going to have to be undertaken in the near future. The only other thing in there that I think worth mentioning is that you have a letter from Dom DeFranco talking about the Memorial Day parade and inviting council to attend.
Hey, dokey, reports, anybody? All right, miscellaneous?
We received notifications.
No, that's all right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, he just said miscellaneous. You started in, and I have a couple of questions.
We received notice from PennDOT that the two local intersection projects, the one at Beller Brook and Vival, the one at Vival in East Merrymurray and Thompsonville Road. Despite the fact that PennDOT's pulling back all money from local projects, those projects remain funded. Design work needed for the determined right-of-way acquisition and construction, those contracts have been let, and those projects are still on board to be done in 2023, so. The only other thing I have on miscellaneous is included in your docket is a compliance audit for the Peter Tonsor Volunteer Relief Association, and that audit is clean and has no findings.
Mr. Lewis?
Two things. One, I wanted to confirm, road tour for this week is gone, right?
It's suspended to some later dates.
The concern I have is, I think we need to be prudently aware of the fact that revenues coming into the township are going to be significantly compromised.
I'm going to bring something up.
Based on the events as they've unfolded for the past thirty days and the next sixty?
Yes, I think what we need to pay particular attention to is the earned income tax. I think that's the one source of revenue that's going to get compromised. I think things like building construction, I'll be surprised that that doesn't bounce back immediately, but the earned income tax, I think.
It's such a big part of what.
It represents slightly over fifty percent of our tax revenues, so we need to pay attention to it.
The earned income tax collector did not extend the deadline, right, for filing the final returns like the IRS and the state did?
I need, I need to get.
Because that's the last I heard from my accountants.
Yeah, but I need to talk to, because normally what KISO Collection Group does, and this was true even when we had Jordan, they follow what the federal government establishes as the deadline. I need to give them a call tomorrow to find out what they're doing with that regard, so.
I would suggest along the lines of what my colleagues have said, that because we are not sure what's going to happen, that we make a definitive plan to look at the budget and maybe look at whether there are capital projects or there's an end as well as operating, that we can look at perhaps reducing now, you know, not spending money on things, not moving ahead if we can delay them. You think that construction may bounce back, and it well might, but if people don't have their income, they might not be able to buy houses. You know, everything is unfortunately tied together, and nobody has crystal balls. So I think proactively, it would be who us to really look at the budget. You know, certainly we, you had alluded to the potential for a tax increase at the end of this year, for the next year. I'm not sure that, you know, we need to, knowing that, we should look at the budget if we don't have that.
Okay. Items for next agenda?
Oh, wait, I have one other miscellaneous. I was over at the glass recycling, dropping off my wine, I mean, my glass, and.
Your wine bottle.
There was a big plexiglass panel that was lying in the grass, right to the, to the right of it. I mean, it was maybe half the size of the projector. It was pretty big, it's just.
Screen.
Is it plexiglass or glass?
I don't know the difference, quite frankly. It looks like glass to me.
But neither one of them would be.
Neither one of those are recycled.
Yeah, so anyhow, it looks like, I think it has holes in it, and it looks heavy.
I'll tell you, we'll take a look.
For one part is, A, it shouldn't be lying there, B, do we have cameras there that might show who might have dropped that off? And C, it needs to be picked up because it's going to kill the grass.
We'll make sure that it gets taken care of. There are not cameras there.
You might want to consider.
Yeah, we need to pick camera up there.
Well, I looked inside, looked like everything in there was pretty much.
People for the most part are following the rules.
Have we been able to put a step or something there for the vertically challenged residents?
I don't know, I.
Maybe we can use that piece of plexiglass.
There you go.
Pill steps.
You know, like a ramp, like your dog is up to.
I had that discussion with the public works department, but I'll be honest with you, I don't know what they.
Well, as of, when I was over there a couple of days ago, there's.
There's, so, okay.
Okay, anything else? All right, we have a executive session.
I do not have anything for an executive session.
Okay, we don't have an executive session.
What about next agenda?
Anything else?
We never, did we do next agenda?
I don't know.
I had a question for you about, you know, the way the market is and the interest rates and things like that, especially with the bonds. Does that have any effect on the bonds that we floated?
No.
Is there any beneficial aspect to paying some of them off? Because I would assume, are they, are they trading at a pre-aim, I guess, because the interest rates are down, is that right, Jeff? Does that make?
Well, actually, the bonds yields are up.
That's what I mean.
But I'm, I'm not sure that would be in our double A-plus category. I think it's more triple Bs and lowers that are having.
And you don't have any bonds right now that are callable, so you can't.
Thought we could call. All right, thank you, that's all I had.
Anything else? Okay.